May I have a motion that we only discuss those three matters for which we went into closed session? Two items under Virginia Code two point two dash three seven one one A one. Discussion of personnel issues involving an appointment and employee evaluation. And one item under Virginia Code two point two dash three seven one one A eight, consultation with legal counsel. Sub move.
Second.
And may I have a roll call for that, please?
Yes, sir. Mr. Penn?
Yes.
Mr. Dawson?
Aye.
Mr. East?
Aye.
Mr. Radcliffe?
Aye.
Mr. Reese?
Aye.
And may I have a motion to approve Resolution twenty twenty one dash three four, appointing Roger Bell to the New River Valley Alcoholics Safety Alcohol Safety Action Program Policy Board.
Sub move.
Sub move.
And may I have a roll call for that, please, sir?
Yes, sir. Mr. Penn?
Yes.
Mr. Nelson?
Aye.
Mr. East?
Aye.
Mr. Radcliffe?
Aye.
Mr. Reese?
Aye.
Alright, now if we could all stand for the Pledge of Allegiance that will be led by Councilman Clark, please. And followed by the invocation of Councilman East.
Our pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the Republic which stands as one nation under God, indivisible, liberate and just as one.
If you'd like to join us for the invocation, please bow your head at this time. Heavenly Father, please guide us this evening as we conduct the business of our town. We ask that you keep and protect each of us and grant us wisdom in all matters before us. We thank you for your for our many blessings and pray that your hand will always be on our community. In your name we pray. Amen.
Amen.
Alright, and then we'll move on. Do we have um, I don't think we have any modifications to public section. Because we did this one already. So I don't think we're in the second yet, so good.
No more modifications, no.
Um, now I'd like to ref- welcome all the guests here and online, um. I'd like to welcome you to our town council meeting. Um, thank you for coming out today. And we'll move first to, um, let's see where it's going, okay. Um, so I'm gonna move on to a presentation. I understand that Polly Mitchell Zaller is here and I'd like for her to come forward as I read the resolution, please. Will you be working well enough here?
You should be.
Okay. Alright, so this is Resolution twenty twenty one dash thirty. Resolution honoring the life of Polly, Pauline G. Polly Mitchell, I know her as Polly. Whereas, the town council desires to recognize and commend the life and work of those citizens in the community who have given their time, talent, and effort in rendering service to the town of Pulaski as a citizen and member of town council. And whereas, Pauline G. Polly Mitchell, a native of Pulaski, was active in the community as a citizen and a council member who faithfully supported her hometown throughout her life. And whereas, Miss Mitchell was one of the first women elected to serve on town council, serving three terms during which she also was a member of various council committees as as either a member or a chairperson and served as a town representative to the agency on aging and the Clean Community Council. And whereas, Miss Mitchell, best known for her love of local history and animals, was active in New River Valley Historical Society and was a charter member of the Pulaski County Humane Society, along with participating in events such as Count Pulaski Day, Pulaski Fest, and the New River Valley Fair. And whereas, no matter what job she did or position she held within the community, Miss Mitchell remained a passionate advocate for the town of Pulaski and its citizens. And whereas, after a long and busy life of giving to her beloved hometown, Miss Mitchell passed away on November twenty ninth, twenty twenty, at the age of ninety five and a half. Now, therefore, be it resolved by the town council of the town of Pulaski, Virginia, sitting in regular session the sixth day of July, twenty twenty one, that the town council does commend the life and service of Pauline G. Polly Mitchell to her community, family, and friends. Further resolved, that the town council extends its deepest sympathies to the family and friends of Pauline G. Polly Mitchell upon her passing. This resolution is will be effective upon adoption and will be adopted the sixth day of July, twenty twenty one, by the duly recorded vote of the town council of the town of Pulaski, Virginia. And may I have a motion to accept this?
Mr. Mayor, make a motion to approve Resolution twenty twenty one dash thirty.
Sub move.
And may I have a roll call for that, please?
Yes, sir. Mr. Penn?
Yes.
Mr. Dawson?
Aye.
Mr. East?
Aye.
Mr. Radcliffe?
Aye.
Mr. Reese?
Yeah.
Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Here's.
Wonderful, thank you.
Firecracker in choir.
Thank you. Firecracker everywhere.
Yes. Okay, now. So now the, okay. We'll move on to the public hearing, um, section, um, first budget appropriation for ARPA funding. I, would I do this first, or? Do you want me to do this first? Okay, alright. Okay.
This w- this was more or less of a win, so it's not, uh, well considered. But what, uh, what what I was interested in is is when I saw the funds being available, uh. And also when I look at West Main Street, there's one building there that you kind of stand at, and that's, uh, the old Appalachian building. Uh, it's is, uh, fourteen thousand square feet. It looked like to me that there would be, uh, be a great deal of opportunity for the town on two scores. One is you would eliminate an eyesore, which seems, truth be told, that building may not sell for a long time. The interior of it is that bad, the exterior is very nice. But it would be the type building that the town might be able to use and also give the town a presence on West Main. But this, like I said, is not well considered. It was something that just occurred to me and I thought it better said than unsaid. So that concludes one of the board.
Thank you, Mr. Dean.
I talked to Miss Denny just the other day and it is actually selling. She is, she has it sold.
Oh, good.
Yeah, so I just, I'm sure of it.
Okay, but that takes still that.
So it will be.
Good enough.
Yes.
Also, for the record, just so you know, I I don't believe that the the ARP funding can be used for that particular purpose, but I'd have to look at it again.
Okay, no.
Yeah, I just, 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 uh, just for your and everybody else's benefit, just that.
That's good to know.
Yeah, it's really focused more on water projects and and some other specific areas, not, it's not allowed, we're not allowed, uh, just for any general expenditure of the town.
That's good to know. Thank you.
And so, uh, to avoid you from having to read all hundred fifty pages of the interim final rule published by the US Treasury Department.
Okay, I'll wait for it.
Alright. Alright, now we can move on to the appropriation of ARP, ARPA funding.
Well, you need to probably close your public hearing.
Oh, yeah, I didn't even, I didn't open it.
Oh, you didn't open it?
No, and now, okay. Every time I miss miss banging a devil. So now we'll close the the, uh, public hearing. Alright, and move on to, shall we do the appropriation then? So we'll do the appropriation, um, that will be Resolution, uh, twenty twenty one dash thirty one. Resolution author- authorizing appropriation of American Rescue Plan Act Fund Grants. So if you want to, or you want to make mention.
Mr. Mayor, make a motion that we adopt Resolution twenty twenty one dash thirty one as written.
Second, and may I have a roll call for that, please?
Mr. Mayor, before you get the roll call, let me just explain as Mr. Re- Reese, uh, did to Mr. Dean's. The federal government has been very specific about the uses of this money and as such, it is not a part of your operating budget. It has been, if you accept, uh, the motion to appropriate, it will be appropriated as a separate grant fund. Uh, so it won't be commingled with your general operating budget. And as we get further guidance as to its uses, we'll break down, uh, that grant into some specific, four specific areas that have been identified in the legislation. There is a heavy emphasis in the legislation on infrastructure. But again, limits that infrastructure to water, wastewater, stormwater. Uh, we'll in fact be able to look at the I and I issue that I know several of you all have identified in the past. But if we're able to do anything in the area of transportation, it's gonna be very limited and we're gonna have to find the right little kind of door to open to make that happen. Uh, there are funds that can be used, uh, much as we did with the CARES Act money to assist businesses, if that's what's needed, uh, to respond to the after effects or the ongoing effects of the pandemic. Uh, and we can certainly assist, uh, certain tourist-related activities and we're looking and stretching ourselves to look at what constitutes, uh, tourism, uh, for our community. Um, I'm hoping that things like playground equipment might be interpreted that way. But again, we're spending a lot of time on Zoom meetings and reading, uh, reams of paper. Uh, we do have a couple of years, uh, to use this money and actually this is the first of two appropriations. We'll receive a second one in the same amount about this time next year. Um, but we are not in a rush to spend it all at once. We want to be very thoughtful about, uh, how to spend it that will put our community in the best position, uh, for the future. And there are a number of conversations going on, in fact, I'll have one again on Thursday, uh, with my counterparts in the New River Valley as we are trying to as a group of communities try to decide what is in our best interest and collectively what's our judgment about what, uh, activities are in fact going to be eligible. There's some strict accounting and reporting, uh, that will be required and justification for each individual project as we go forward. So I will keep the council updated, but I just wanted to make, uh, you all aware that we're going to proceed cautiously, uh, and look at every aspect of our operation as well as the community, make sure that we do take full advantage of these funds because they're one-time funds and should be used for one-time purposes. We don't wanna build in expenses for the future that we're not prepared to absorb.
Is your, is your intention in, uh, excuse me, I appreciate that we know everything you're having to go through. I I followed a few of the links on the documentation regarding the Oracle funds, but, um, and that there's always another link to follow and it just never ends.
Yes.
And so, um, after doing that for a while, I I said, well, I'll just talk to, talk. But isn't the intention that once you have some time to work through this, that you'll come back to the council with recommendations? I certainly agree, not something we wanna rush through, but there are some with the I and I as you mentioned, uh, mitigating the flooding in, uh, Peak Creek, which.
We're looking at what we can do in for Peak Creek as well. I failed to mention that one, but yeah. There are certain items that I've already said go ahead and order because there's gonna be such a lead time. One of them is the, uh, replacement of the remaining two filters, uh, at the water treatment plant that we know we've had problems and while we have replaced two, uh, we're still not out of the wood yet. Uh, so something like that is a, for me, is a no-brainer and the council's talked about that enough uh, that we're gonna go ahead and put that in the pipeline. Uh, we're gonna be looking at our capital budget and for those things that we can spend, um, the ARPA money for rather than, for example, you're going for a loan for a water project, we're definitely gonna put those on the list. But we will be bringing back to you all our list. In fact, I have a meeting later this week with all of the department heads and I've asked them to bring their list, uh, forward for our consideration and we're gonna do some brainstorming around those lists so that we will in fact be ready to bring to something to you all perhaps as soon as the next meeting, uh, but, um,
Oh, that's similar.
Guidelines are still under review and there's still opportunity for public comment through the middle of this month. So things could change yet again. Um, so we're at this point only doing or taking action on those things that we know absolutely need to be done and absolutely qualify. But I'm, I'll tell you, you know, my brain is kind of on sideways with some of this, so I've taken pictures of, um, as one example, of an electric charging station with the idea that I think that could be potentially a tourist attraction and bringing people off of the interstate because people who have electric vehicles oftentimes, um, have services that tell them where those charging stations are and if we could draw people off of the interstate to come visit our community for the first time and have to park their car and then walk around and look at our stores, that to me is a tourism opportunity. So there's some crazy thoughts going on, not not just in my head, but in others, just to try to make sure that we have given as much thinking as possible to the whole venture. I did mention that one, uh, as an example the other day, someone in the county and they immediately said, oh, well, maybe something like that at the chain, uh, offices. You know, so we just need to really have the openness to what our thoughts are, but you all will be giving us ideas, I'm sure, as well.
Sure.
So I, I know it's not the, the, uh, pretty good solution, I guess, but I know, you know, our aging water lines have been discussed multiple times and that's not something anyone would ever know that we fixed, but I know it has always been discussed as the problem that, uh, no one could afford to fix. Uh, that sounds like.
That's, that's on our list. We just wanna figure out how the best way to approach it. There actually is a, a program that we're, um, working under right now where theoretically that something from the sky is gonna tell us the condition of some of our water lines. But there's also some equipment that we could be purchasing, in my opinion. Again, they'll go on the list to help us better identify some of these issues, not just the I and I study, but there is equipment that can kind of detect water leaks. It's been something that we haven't been able to afford, uh, in the past that we wanna perhaps look at. Um, we know that we have a valve replacement that we've talked to you all about, uh, that we need to get done as soon as possible and it's expensive composition. It's not a like-to-have, it's a must-have. Uh, we do need to deal with, um, the I and I issue, which is the result of these, many of these older lines and we also need to be replacing many of those lines. We're gonna spend this money, nobody should doubt our ability to spend the amount of money that we're gonna have over the next, uh, several years. It's just gonna be a question of the priorities. But you're absolutely right, those aging water lines are top of the list, along with our water treatment plant, uh, which obviously is critical. We are experiencing some water loss that could be mitigated if we could repair some of those lines. I'm sorry, Mr. Mayor, to interrupt, but I wanted to make sure that people understood that we're still developing that list and that you all will have an opportunity to see that list just as soon as we're comfortable that federal government's not gonna change the rules again.
Okay, so, yes, so we have a motion still on the table and we have a second too, so may I have a roll call for that, please?
There's a motion.
Yes, sir. Mr. Penn?
Yes.
Mr. Dawson?
Aye.
Mr. East?
Aye.
Mr. Radcliffe?
Aye.
Mr. Reese?
Aye.
Okay, so I think we already had a couple comments, so that was, alright, so let's move on to the considered agenda. Um, so if you would look at the, the consideration of, um, June fifteenth, twenty twenty one council work session minutes. Um, who's the one who wants to make a motion to accept it?
Mr. Mayor, I'd make a motion to approve the June fifteenth, twenty twenty one council work session minutes.
And was that second? Okay, and may I have a roll call for that, please?
Yes, sir. Mr. Penn?
Yes.
Mr. Dawson?
Aye.
Mr. East?
Aye.
Mr. Radcliffe?
Aye.
Mr. Reese?
Aye.
Okay, and then if you look at June twenty eighth, twenty twenty one, our call council meeting minutes, and we need a motion for that.
Mr. Mayor, I move that we adopt the poll meeting minutes from June twenty eighth, twenty twenty one as written.
And then I'll be roll call for that, please, sir. You have a second here, yes?
It was a late second.
Yeah.
Uh, Mr. Penn?
Yes.
Mr. Dawson?
Aye.
Mr. East?
Aye.
Mr. Radcliffe?
Aye.
Mr. Reese?
Aye.
Then we need to move to the appropriation of Police Department Funds, Resolution twenty twenty one dash thirty two. Um, it's a resolution of, uh, uh, authorizing appropriation of Police Department Funds.
Mr. Mayor, I move to adopt Resolution twenty twenty one dash thirty two as written.
Second, and a roll call for that, please.
Yes, sir. Mr. Penn?
Yes.
Mr. Dawson?
Aye.
Mr. East?
Aye.
Mr. Radcliffe?
Aye.
Mr. Reese?
Aye.
Excuse me. Alright. Resolution supporting the Minor League Baseball Relief Act, Resolution twenty twenty one dash thirty three. And, yeah, darling, can, do we need an overview on that of what that says?
Yeah, I was just looking at that. I didn't realize that, uh, page was included. Uh, we have been advised, um, that, um, one of our congressional representatives as well as others have offered or introduced a, a bill, um, that has bipartisan participation or support that would provide, uh, some Relief Act funding that is left over, uh, from the COVID nineteen relief funds and that those funds be repurposed, uh, administered by the Small Business Administration uh, and provided to eligible minor league baseball clubs, um, as it relates to their loss of revenue um, and their expenses that they incurred, uh, during, uh, the COVID epidemic. And we know that, um, our particular local, um, baseball club has been identified in some correspondence as being one of those that this funding would be directed toward. And so we all, I think, understand the importance of the activities that occur at County Park and, uh, have provided this resolution of support that will be, uh, sent to our congressional delegation urging them to support this measure as quickly as possible.
If, am I reading that correctly, it 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 appears to be extend beyond just the ball field, but also restaurants, town restaurants and gas stations, um, and hotels, of course, we don't have the wine, but it's really, it makes reference to, to, uh, restaurants and gas stations, so it seems to reach outside of just the ballpark.
And again, the details, you know, we have not seen, um, in terms of the actual bill itself.
Seems to be.
But this overview that was provided that I believe, uh, the clerk found certainly indicates that we have to wait and see
Okay.
uh, actually how it's to be, um, administered. I do know that, uh, those who receive CARES Act funding and, um, none was requested for this particular activity when we had those funds available, uh, last year, um, there is a need to provide documentation that indicates exactly what those expenses were or their losses were. Um, so that that may be an issue that may be a little bit more difficult for some businesses. We'll certainly, if this is, um, passed, make sure that any eligible organizations that are in our community take advantage of it or at least are aware of it, um, because I'm sure they're gonna have to, um, apply through the Small Business Administration for any funding that is eligible. It would not be done some, it would not be something that would be done locally.
Yeah, and and for, this is similar to a program that was put together for businesses like, uh, theaters and other entertainment venues, but for whatever reason, major league base, ma- the minor league baseball teams were left out of. Although they are, so, so that was the idea, that that there were other, you know, businesses that couldn't operate due to pandemic restrictions. And so there was a specific, um, line item or portion of the bill that was directed at theaters, comedy clubs, those kinds of places. And so this is an extension of, if there's money left over, for that money to to go to these venues that are, like in our town, very important to the local community financially and otherwise.
And so may I get a motion that, uh, for support, uh, Resolution twenty twenty one dash thirty three, supporting the Minor League Baseball Relief Act.
Mr. Mayor, make a motion to give a, uh, adopt Resolution twenty twenty one dash thirty three as written. Second.
And may I have a roll call for that, please, sir?
Yes, sir. Mr. Penn?
Yes.
Mr. Dawson?
Aye.
Mr. East?
Aye.
Mr. Radcliffe?
Aye.
Mr. Reese?
Aye.
Okay, and before we move on to this parking ordinance, um, I need a motion that we take ordinance twenty twenty one dash seventeen from the table. We had, we had stopped it before and so they, we had, uh,
We tabled it.
We had it tabled and so that they can update it. I need a call from there so that we can go and put it back on. So I need a motion to, um, remove it, take, you know, take it off the table.
Put it back on the agenda?
No, just, it has to be determined.
Take it off table and then turn it on? Over.
I just need someone to action in a second.
I make a motion to untable ordinance twenty twenty one dash seventeen.
Second.
And a roll call for that, please.
Yes, sir. Mr. Penn?
Yes.
Mr. Nelson?
Aye.
Mr. East?
Aye.
Mr. Radcliffe?
Aye.
Mr. Reese?
Aye.
Okay, and then, I guess, then we want to amend this parking code. So we'll need one for, we'll need a motion for ordinance twenty twenty one dash seventeen to go through, right, as, as written now.
Yes.
Yes, that's correct.
Does, does anybody have any questions or comments on that? Just, just as a record, I think I was the one who questioned the confusing description to some of the parking terms and so, um, I wanna say thank you to the town staff for for clarifying, because these are all very clear, very simple English. Uh, and so I appreciate that being done. I think it'll be useful for our residents. If they're gonna be cited, they should know what they're being cited for. So, uh, motion to adopt ordinance twenty twenty one dash seventeen.
Before we make that.
Oh, sorry, go ahead.
Uh, one, one item on the, the, at least, is a, uh, ha- handicap parking. There's a, there's a two hundred fifty dollar fine. I support that, but I think you have, gotta be careful because there's, there's a lot of, uh, handicaps, uh, zones in Pulaski that are not properly designated.
That's true, and we cannot, uh, cite them until they are properly labeled. Uh, that is in fact an existing amount. Uh, we have just published the entire list, so we're not changing it. But, uh, you're absolutely correct. Uh, as I travel around, I see a lot of them that aren't properly signed and therefore we cannot enforce, uh, those. But we can advise particularly, um, in private parking lots, you know, in public lots, that they should in fact correct the signage. And we had someone recently talk about one of the sites here at Town Hall and we corrected it. So that's an important point, Mr. Penn. Thank you.
I'm good, I'm good.
Thank you. Ordinance, uh, so motion to adopt ordinance twenty twenty one dash seventeen as amended and currently written.
Sub move.
And may I have a roll call for that, please?
Yes, sir. Mr. Penn?
Yes.
Mr. Dawson?
Aye.
Mr. East?
Aye.
Mr. Radcliffe?
Aye.
Mr. Reese?
Aye.
Uh, Mr. Mayor, um, back on the I and twelve public comment period, Mr. Dean's had some additional.
Did he have another one besides that? Oh, I'm sorry. Oh, that's why it came up. I'm sorry, okay. So if we move back to the, uh, public comment period then, if you had something else there. I'm sorry, I didn't mean to pass you by.
No, that, that's fine, that's fine. This is a, uh, uh, pretty much just a correction. The last time I was here, I would say car doors open this way and that way and this way, which wasn't very clear. So I made this diagram which I sent you all. But this, in my view, illustrates the difference between drive-in angle parking and back-in. If you use conventional dr- drive-in, as you see in most places, what happens is this, when the doors open, children are directed to the street, which is dangerous, and people who are drivers and who are exiting, going to their trunks also are near the street. also are near the street. So these these colors in red are intended to indicate people that are in danger, either with bicycles, children or pedestrian. The difference is, is although it's novel, back-end angle parking prevents all of this. When you open the doors, children are directed toward the sidewalks and are and are there therefore safe. Obviously, when you're getting stuff from your car, from the rear of it, you're safer when you're on the sidewalk than when you're in the street. All this is relative, yeah, all this is dropped in obvious, but it's not obvious until you, at least to me, until I saw it. So that's, I just wanted to have that for your benefit, when you're considering um uh drive-in parking. The other thing that for me that struck home is my doctor Jerome Goldschmidt in Blacksburg was practicing with a physician who was killed in the parking lot the week before he's gonna retire. So this pretty much struck home, uh you know, how dangerous a parking situation is. I forget the exact numbers, I'd written it down to you, but we, no, it's in the many thousands of people who are injured from uh backup parking. None of this you really have when you back into the lot. And the other thing that's of interest is since May two thousand eighteen, back backup cameras are required in all cars, so it will become progressively easier for people to back up. And although I'm a a fan of it, I will acknowledge that people, particularly inexperienced drivers, are in a uncomfortable often backing in, but but any parking on an angle parking, sometimes you've gotta reverse. When you go in, you gotta reverse out. If you reversed, you go in. You're simply you're simply reversing one time in each case, regardless which style you use. The back-end parking, in my view, is safer, then I think that's supported, but it's not it's it's not common. Uh but I just.
Well, I I I wanted to say, I was on vacation the week before last and I was in Cape Charles on the eastern shore and they actually had that back-end angle parking in their downtown and it seemed like everybody was used to it and it it was it it I actually took a picture of it. I meant to send it to everybody else, but I forgot to do that. But it was it was it was
I I didn't hear you. What town was that?
Cape Charles, it's on the eastern shore, um and it's got a sort of little downtown, walkable and it it did did make it sort of, it was
Oh, okay. Yeah.
it seemed to work well there. They had only on one side, the other side they had just, you know, parallel, um.
Uh I think that's conventional.
Yeah, so but it was but it certainly seemed like it didn't impede traffic flow and certainly
Do I do it one time because that's
maximize parking space. So it's something we should consider whenever we do bigger projects, certainly.
And if I can comment, just one other thing, it's really pedestrian safe when you have like a uh a beach scene with people are 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 beach minded. That's what you're thinking about, getting on the beach quickly and playing around. If you're if you're automatically directed toward the sidewalk, more power to you.
Can I ask you a question on the current flow that's going on now? Um in the current flow that's going on down there now, you've got two lanes of traffic coming this way, flowing away. If you done the parking.
Well, you can't you can't do this as easily with two lanes. Uh you need a wider street.
Okay, that's what I was gonna get to.
Yeah, if you're talking about like the municipal park,
Yeah.
uh the street width there, you're right, right, you do need wider.
Yeah.
But you need that for any angle parking, it has to be wider.
How much wider, uh I guess it how much would it take away your sidewalk for pedestrian?
The the interesting part, uh that little bit I wrote you, uh I tried to put in dimensions. You can actually do a little bit better with back-end parking, particularly trucks, because you have a foot and a quarter ad uh advantage when you're backing in. So but uh and also I thought that was interesting, see Ford truck is going from sedan, I mean Ford now is is simply a truck manufacturer and a few sedans.
Okay, if if you if you if you did the backing in like this, you're backing on both sides of the road, even if the streets was a little narrow.
I I I think you'd have to back in only on one side. Yeah, I don't think we've got wide enough streets to have. I think it it would be parking on one side of the street, I would.
Yeah, you're right. Yeah, exactly.
That's that was a question because if the UPS or product trucks try to unload them, just block up the street. So you were saying just one side only?
Yeah, I mean we we have to look at the interior.
I I I think.
This will have some.
Right.
Yeah.
Every drawing I've seen has only had it on one side of the street. You know, you're right, you couldn't have it on both sides.
Yeah, right.
And but you'd have the same problem with annual parking, you know, uh on both sides of the streets. They both pretty much require same amount of space. But I don't wanna take up too much of your time.
Thank you.
But that's it, thank you.
Thank you.
Let's uh move on to seventeen, which is the moving of local elections to November, um general election, level two November general election date, ordinance twenty twenty one dash twenty one.
Mister May, Mister Mayor, I move that we adopt ordinance twenty twenty one dash twenty one, moving local elections from May to November.
Second. And uh may I have a motion, I mean may I have a roll call for that please?
Yes sir, Mister Penn?
Yes.
Mister Dawson?
Aye.
Mister East?
Aye.
Mister Angel?
Aye.
Mister Col, uh Mister Reese?
Aye.
We'll move on to the council comments. I'll start with Mister Manning.
I I don't have anything. Thank you.
And Mister Dawson, go first. Mister East?
Nothing, Mister Mayor, thank you.
Don't have to turn, sorry. I do.
It is be, uh first of all, I want to uh uh Mister Hall back here, who is a uh individual come up the house for a couple hours, we talked for a long time. Uh I'd like for you to meet up with Mister Questonbury afterwards, and we'd like to have you on a few boards. We've probably got some openings, I don't know, but he's very energetic. He has great ideas, he had a lot of concerns. Uh I tried to explain to him the best we could, we got it works and and I hope I I answered some of your questions and I know some of it's a long haul, but uh it is what it is, but I would love to have you on a few boards. Mister Questonbury, he is the guy to go to, we could use you in the near future. That's where I started out at, so work your way around on it. Uh the only other thing I have is uh I wanna get into a uh a little bit of a a comment that was made, uh it's off record with us, but it's not. There was a comment made by the uh basic school superintendent here a few weeks ago that uh everybody here should have took offense to. Uh I've had great opportunity to work for four great sheriffs, Frank Connors being number one, Mike World being the one now. Three Commonwealth attorneys, multiple board supervisors, my favorite, no pick no pick, Mister Joe Shannon. He was one of my all-time favorites. Uh Mister Cook goes way on back, Mister Connors. All these people are community workers, they grew this county in every way, shape and form. Uh I've had the great opportunity to work for multiple council people, each and every one of us, no matter what type it is, whether you wanna admit it or not. I took offense to it. Worked for Mister Penn for many years, but he worked for the county, Mister Penn, I could ask him a question, if I stumbled on something, I'd always get an answer from Mister Penn. He'd always give me the answer. There was a statement made that I take offense and I I I want to support my board of supervisors in a letter that was sent to the school board to remedy this, but I want my messy school board, Miss Cox, to step up to the plate. That's what I elected you for, that's why I voted for you. Pull that microphone down and you take care of that problem. Alright? You made a statement, you put it out there, it was on this however it got out, doesn't matter, I don't care how it got out there. But I rest assure you, all these board supervisors, all these sheriffs I work for, all these deputy police officers, everyone sitting here. I've never been to a Klan rally. I don't know that anybody has. That's his statement. Felt like I was going to a Klan meeting. He said that. I'm sorry it feels like that. In fact, you loved it, get on out of here. It won't be missed. But I want my representative, Miss Cox, calling back to take care of this problem before it gets any worse. Can't go any further with it. But I I'd step only step out because I love my town, I love my citizens, that this is the greatest community you could ever wanna live in. We have so much going forward with us. Just throw a log in the road. We're gonna move it, we get over it in a big deal. I will put that out there. I don't care if anybody else backs it, you have your opinion, that's my opinion, and if anybody knows me, I won't tell them. And I ain't worried about it. Come after me whole hall. I love you. But I will be going to school board meetings, let me stay forward. Until next election. You can bet on that, Mister Mayor, that's it, I think.
Are you looking, uh Jamie, are you looking for a motion in support of the uh county's uh letter to the school board?
I haven't read the letter personally, I have had it sent to, I haven't really read the letter. Uh I'd be glad to get it. If we want, we can do it. If you wanna support, that's fine. Uh I am supporting my board supervisors, I am supporting my great sheriff, my great sheriff department. It was personally called out for them, him. Never be more wrong than what he was. But I can.
Can I ask a question, Jamie? What was it exactly he said that was wrong that insulted the sheriff's department?
He personally called out the sheriff in his comment.
In what comment?
In the comment he made about.
I mean, cause I've I've looked at the emails and I don't see any reference to Mike World in any of them.
No, 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 he didn't say Mike World.
Well, he said he personally called him out.
Sheriff 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 Department, he is Mike World. He is the sheriff.
Well, but that's different than calling out him personally, isn't it?
If you talk about the sheriff department, you talk about him. He is the, he's the leader, just like your president United States is right now. He's the leader, he can accept.
Well, you can, I mean, you can criticize the F B I, I don't criticize.
I I'm not gonna debate, I mean, you got your own opinion. I read the email, I read it, I you we can debate, how you wanna debate.
Well, I'm just curious, I mean, cause here's the thing that I see. I see that there was a report issued five years ago that said that blacks students in this county are two or times more likely to be suspended, that students from poor
I I.
poor socioeconomic and 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 minority backgrounds are underperforming state standards on reading and other state tests. And you might disagree with Mister Sears, Doctor Sears, so his, you know, methods. But I don't see anything in any of the criticisms of Doctor Sears besides the fact that he wrote some emails that people didn't like actually addressing these underlying issues. And I think if you if the county has a goal, and the town should have a goal, of increasing our population and people by and large are in support of, you know, all the, you know, if in this country and I would guess in this state and probably in this county even, if you just ask them that whether or not, you know, people should be treated with dignity and students are underperforming, should receive more attention, then they'd say yes, they support that. But I don't see in any of the criticisms of Doctor Sears any acknowledgement of those issues, those underlying issues. And so, you know, I wanna say, since it's been brought up, that, you know, that there are criticisms of certain emails that Doctor Sears has sent. I think he's apologized for those, but I think at the at at the end of the day, we need to be addressing these issues because the quality of the education that our students are receiving affects, you know, their success in life and that affects the success of this town and this county. And unless we're addressing that, if we're just arguing over met, you know, whether or not somebody said something that was offensive, then we're missing the point. You know, the the point here is that we've got problems with the with the and this is not and and whether and, you know, the outcome is not, you know, whether or not we get a new superintendent. The outcome is if we don't address these issues, you know, the state, our regulator, comes in and says, you gotta do this, that and the other thing. And I don't think that's an outcome that anybody on any whatever their opinion wants happening. We wanna be able to run our own schools and run our own school, but we have to sort of measure up to certain minimum standards. Or we're gonna turn, you know, we don't wanna turn into one of those places where the state runs, then this happens. Happens where I grew up, it happens in Virginia, where the state runs the school board. Um so that being said, um one more comment, I wanted to thank Darlene and the town street crews for addressing some issues that came up from a constituent. I appreciate that they acknowledged that they dropped the ball on something and came out and fixed the problem. So thank you for that, Darlene. And that's all my comments.
I will I will make one comment as the subject has come up. I think anytime, you know, I've sat through and I've watched numerous hours of school board meetings. Um I was curious as to where that comment came from and and there's a lot of school board meetings to watch, trust me.
I know.
I never saw anything that, um and I've been to a Klan rally, but I never saw anything that resembled that. I saw our local community coming out in opposition to something that they feel very passionate about. Um at no times did I see it as being racist or um or anti anything, anti anyone. It was very uh it was very pro education, very pro um children, if you will. You know, when you put parents, when you put parents in a position to where they're gonna have to um guard what their children are taught in the school environment, they're gonna have to protect their children from things that you find um offensive, then people are gonna be passionate. That's what this coun this this country is about, it's about being passionate. More people need to be passionate uh about these issues and and quite frankly, um I find CRT uh completely offensive.
What part of the?
On many levels. On the part that deals with the fact it's divisive. It it
What part, what about?
I I'm not I'm not gonna argue, I'm gonna make this statement, it's divisive. And the part that's divisive is everybody is very aware of what color they are. I think that's extremely unfortunate. Um children, children aren't aren't racist by nature, so teaching young children uh to be very aware of skin color and 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 you're either oppressed or oppressor is a destructive philosophy. It's a destructive um teaching. Uh not in addition to CRT, to that CRT actually goes into and basically undermines everything that this country's founded on. The the basic, the 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 founding of our our founding documents are called into question in CRT. Um that to me is disgusting. So to 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 sit here, a- and I realize this isn't our issue as a board, but as a father in this community, it is an issue to me. As a father of a child that are in Pulaski, that that's in Pulaski County school system, uh I find it disgusting. And uh I think the fact that anyone would try and condone a statement like calling passionate parents uh uh or or relating them to to being at a a Klan rally, I find that offensive. And I find it disgusting. That's all I had to say.
Something English, you want me? Yeah. So we had a really nice um um Fourth of July parade and I think it was a good turnout, um think that some things were thrown overboard, but um but I think it turned out really well. I think we had a good turnout of our people here in town and the people that wanted to be in it. And I think we need to do more. It shows that there that our town wants to get out and they want to do stuff. And I think we're ready for it too. But I I I thank the Police Department for helping with it and Darlene, thank you, Jordan, and everyone else involved, but I just wanted to thank them for the for the festivities this weekend, so I will move on to the manager's report now.
Well, for those of you that can uh see what I'm wearing today, you say see that I'm still celebrating, uh because I have fireworks on my shirt. Uh and I was going to make some comments similar uh to the mayor's. Uh this was my first uh parade uh for the Fourth of July in the town, uh but I was very pleased with the turnout. I viewed it from three different sides of the four streets that uh it circled around and had the opportunity to chat with a number of citizens who were on the sidelines, which was my intent. I really wanted to get a feel for uh the community. Um had somebody run up to me Um, had somebody run up to me and shouting my name, and I'd never seen them before, but they said they had recognized, uh, me, so I've gotta wear a disguise the next time I go out, uh, and just do walking around. But it really was a very, very nice event, um, and I have some ideas, and I've already talked to a couple of the departments about how we as an organization can participate, not just in providing security and, uh, cones and stuff, but as actually participants in the parade for the next time that it is, um, in the town. And I hope that the next time it's on our schedule, 'cause I understand Dublin does it one year and we do it the next. Um, and we ended up getting this, uh, news that we were to put on a parade fairly late in the game. But I want to publicly commend Robbie Kaiser, uh, our fire chief, and Jordan Witt, uh, your social media person, who took on, uh, they were voluntold, uh, that, uh, they would be in charge of, uh, the parade and in record-breaking time. I think they put on a very, very nice event, and I've heard only positive comments from others. In fact, uh, your clerk told me it was the best, uh, parade ever, uh, that he had been a, a, not a participant, but a casual bystander about. Uh, I actually got down to the parade, uh, a little bit early and went into the Fine Arts Center. Some businesses were open, although unfortunately most were closed, and I think they lost an opportunity to really, uh, have people see the kind of businesses that we already have in the downtown and maybe identify what we need additionally. But I went into the Fine Arts Center and I was given this beautiful photograph of the town um, as a gift from a young lady who's on the board of the Fine Arts Center for all that the town has done for that organization. Uh, and it's such a beautiful picture, I have a feeling I'm gonna end up putting it in the town manager's office, uh, rather than displaying it elsewhere, which means people can come see me if they want to take a look at it. But, um, I think it's just some very nice recognition, not only of the town, but of the beauty of our town. This particular, uh, picture, uh, was obviously orchestrated at an ideal time when the sun was gone and the sky was cooperating. But it also shows, uh, part of the holiday festivities, and that it has the lighted trees that we put up each year during the holiday season. So I want to tell you that as a newcomer to the town, I certainly felt very, very good, uh, about the parade, and I agree with the mayor's comments that people are excited to finally be out and about. Uh, they were respectful, uh, but yet also cheering for all of the, uh, individuals and cars and vehicles that went by. And, uh, I, I just really felt good about being a part of the Pulaski community, and I hope that we can put on more events in the future that give our citizens, um, the opportunity, uh, to celebrate what we do have in this community. Actually talked to a couple that had come in from Garyville, Tennessee, um, to visit with family over the weekend, and were very excited about what we were doing. So again, I think the trick to economic development, the trick to, and the trick to getting people to come to our community is getting them here the first time. And events like the Fourth of July parade are those kinds of events. We do have a couple of other events that are slated to be in the community in the near future that are being put on by individuals, and we should support those in every way that we can as well, because every one of those is an opportunity to find a new business person, a new resident for the community. But, uh, thank you for my first year, um, here with the town. Um, I told the council earlier, depending on how you count it, it's either six months, or it's a year, but it's been a year. Uh, but a very rewarding year for me personally because of the support of the council as well as the support of your employees. And again, I can't say enough that you have a great bunch of employees, uh, who are willing to do their very best with limited resources. And we will keep trying to stretch those resources and increase those resources and do the things that make this a community that people want to be part of, so thank you.
Maybe could I actually make a real quick comment?
Hmm?
Um, I just wanted to publicly thank, I don't know how many of you know John Root, um, but he, I think he was in my office probably every day last week. He kinda took it upon himself to help out with the parade, so I just wanted to thank him as well for just, who wants to help out.
I think I seen him two or at least once.
I saw him more than once. All right, well, then we'll move on to, just as a reminder, our future council meeting will be July twentieth, twenty twenty one, work session, uh, council work session. Close session begins at five, public session begins at six thirty, and if I can have a motion to adjourn?
Mm. Second.
Second, and all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
So be it.